Okay, it's seven o'clock and this is the third. Welcome to the October 18th Planning Board meeting. Would you join in and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, on the issue of our God and the principle of liberty and justice for all?
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Pishon.
Here.
Mr. Gardina.
Here.
Mr. Cosell.
Here.
Mr. Moffler.
Here.
Mr. Mixel.
Present.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Okay, we can get right started, I guess. Rough Day Resort is here for sketch plan review. Would you go ahead with that?
Rough Day Resort located at 1085 Gravel Road. The applicant's team holds his requesting sketch plan review associated with the reuse of an existing office building for a dog care, daycare, assuming training, boarding, and grooming facility on a 0.69 acre parcel located in an M.C. medium intensity commercial district under sections 225-17 and 228-4 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Snyder. I'm with Pastors Associates here presenting with Amy Holtz, the applicant of Rough Day Resort tonight. So as was said, 1085 Gravel Road is the location, 0.69 acres. The proposed use is a dog daycare with ancillary boarding of dogs. It's considered a kennel use by the zoning code. We did receive a special permit by the Town Board previously for this application. We're here tonight to present for a sketch or preliminary site plan review. A step after that would be then going to the zoning board and then coming back to this board for final review. The site, the existing building for our office use is about 4,370 square foot building. There's gonna be, one of the comments provided was if grading would occur. There's gonna be no grading on-site or no site disturbance other than new fencing as described in the application. So, let's see. The fencing actually is gonna be, there's some existing fencing there on the property line to the west which will be modified. All fencing is going to be six feet tall chain link fencing with a mesh screen for privacy on-site. Some of the comments provided, there was a comment from community development regarding egress from the basement level. The previously, the previous uses of de-occupancy under the New York State Building Code, the new use is also de-occupancy. So in terms of egress, there's not gonna be any new work that will need to be completed in order for the building to be, meet health, safety requirements of the New York State Building Code. And I think with that, we can address some of the other ones after Amy has a chance to speak. Amy's gonna describe a little bit more about the operation of Dog Day Resort, or I'm sorry, Rough Day Resort, or Dogs.
How are you doing? Good evening. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I think it's important to note that we keep being referred to as a kennel, and I think that that makes people see a particular image that is not what we are. So I'm just here tonight to kind of explain to you that Rough Day Resort is really a home away from home, and it's a place where people who think very highly of their dogs bring their dogs to us because we spoil them. They're not in a kennel, they're not in a chain link concrete run, running up and down, barking, defecating. They're, they're in a place where, I run a business because my husband at the time limited the number of dogs that I could have, so I love other people's dogs. Okay? So they come to us, they play all day, they're loved, they're groomed, they're fed. We take pictures of them, whether that be back-to-school pictures, Christmas pictures, whatever. They play, they go outside just like somebody would at home, and then they go to bed at night. So they're not locked in a cage, they're not running up and down in the chain link fence, they're not barking incessantly. They truly are a home away from home when they're with us. In addition to that, my main profession is I'm a dog trainer. So the dogs that do come to us automatically get some training, but on the side, you know, I'm also encouraging the owners of these dogs to, hey, let's maybe work on this or that to make them a little bit more suitable for, for home and travel.
Is there someone, oh, I'm sorry, I don't know. Is there someone there at night with them? Anybody?
Currently, we don't have anybody who spends the night, and that is just because the building that we were in, we were told was not zoned for sleeping. We had tried for a short time having staff work overnight, but the work that they were performing was keeping the dogs from sleeping. And then if the staff was there just kind of sitting, they were falling asleep, so we kind of fell into a little conundrum where we have a time between midnight and 6:00 a.m. that there's nobody in the building other than the alarm system and the cameras.
I was there, I went over to look at the building there, it was last week, meet before, I guess. Yeah, meet before. I think you got something pretty decent to use, it was a nice building and all. But the egress window in the back is a simple egress. And when I'm looking at it, my, my thought, my feeling was, if anything, that should have some steps, you know, build a door with steps or something coming out of it. Other than that, I have no issues with it. I spoke with Ryan, next door, your mechanic at Repair Shop.
Yes, I spoke to him as well.
What's that?
I spoke to him as well.
Yeah, and he was lying, he said, I have no issues with it, and if he doesn't have any issues with it, I'll do it next year, because he's the closest thing to it there.
And he actually said to me, would you please fix that fence? And I said, whatever you want, I will put there.
I said, I have no issues other than that.
Yeah, the note about the egress, I mentioned to Chris that there's actually another set of stairs that were kind of left out of this equation. So right now, there's two ways to get out of the basement. One is a set of stairs with doors that goes up in the back, and then also that legal egress.
I would also like to note that, under the New York State Building Code, specifically for de-occupancies, the, the travel path for an egress location is a maximum of 75 feet. The kennel area as described on the plans is within that 75 feet from the stairs. So, you know, if the, if the concern is animals being able to get out, it would meet code requirements if those code requirements were extended to animals.
No. Okay, I don't know how that works. So it's the same for animals?
So there are no code requirements under the New York State Building Code for animals, but it works to apply that to animals, sort of how, because I'm understanding the concerns about that. It would meet requirements for both people and animals if that was the requirement for animals, because the, the travel path within the area of where the kennel area is, is within that 75 feet threshold.
All right, that's just, that was my only issue with it, was the egress in the back. Anybody, any questions?
So the kennels, suites and the basement, those are like the luxury suites where the dogs would spend the night?
Yeah, so our intent is, many times we get requests from a parent for two dogs or three dogs to stay together.
Okay.
So we are, we're designing basic little studios that will have a couch, a television, and a camera, so that people can look at them and have a nice little care.
And so there's one, two, three, four, five, so there's five, but it doesn't mean you're gonna have five dogs, it depends on...
It really just depends on who wants to spend that sweet spot there. There, there will be regular boarding in care as well, but, you know, sometimes when you're, you're leaving two or three dogs with us, you might as well, you know, get them out to the suite.
Yep.
I have two point questions. Number one, how many, what's the maximum number of dogs you could have at this facility? And number two, how many employees are you going to employ to watch the dogs?
Well, this is New York State, we're having a little hard time getting people to work, but, you know, we hire every day, so. Unfortunately, again, just with like the requirements for legal egress to get dogs outside, dogs are left out of a lot of rules and regulations. The Humane Society of the United States, though, does recommend that you have one employee per 15 dogs. That being said, I, I've worked with a lot of other daycares in the area, and unfortunately I have the highest payroll of anybody because I run a ratio of more like one employee for eight dogs. And a lot of that depends on, are we talking about three Chihuahuas or three Great Danes? So it really, a lot of that can vary. My maximum number of dogs at a peak season would probably be, you know, during the day, 45 dogs, in the evening, closer to 15 to 20. And that sounds like a lot.
With that many dogs around, do you have to do special, meet special conditions to re, for, for waste there, or do you keep it on-site for a week, or?
Believe it or not, there is a company that comes and picks up dog poop, that's what they do for a business, it's called Duty Master. So she's a friend of mine, we've been friends for 20 years, and she will service my business three to five times a week if I get it open.
If that's the egress thing, I was just concerned, is just not all the dogs getting out, but if someone was down there to get the dogs out, I wanna make sure that they can get out easily, you know?
Well, the building does have a sprinkler system and alarm system, gratefully, but, you know, our employees are always trained to call 911 first because we are not firefighters. Obviously, the doors in the egress would be open to let anybody out, but we're not asking them to run into the flames.
And the drawing, it shows, it shows, when you're storage, it shows, you know, flights of stairs.
Yes.
That's, what, first floor? Yeah, that's the upper level, yeah, first floor. Okay, and then you said there's another set of stairs somewhere else? I don't, I only see that one set.
Yeah, so there's one set of stairs that goes from the first level down to the basement, and then that egress is about halfway down from the same back of the building.
No, you said there were two flights of stairs, right?
One flight of stairs, one egress.
Oh, yeah, well, that's what I was saying, the egress is the only other way.
Yes.
So if the dogs are in the basement, they gotta go up those stairs, there's no way we can get them out through the back. They'd never come out if the egress went up. That's why I was suggesting, you know, a set of stairs up the back, you know?
I honestly, I didn't, when I looked at the egress, I didn't see an issue with myself getting out of there, but, you know, maybe.
Well, no, I agree, that's what the egress window is for.
Yeah.
For human, you know, exit.
I would think the dogs would be able to get out of that easier than I feel.
No, no, it's down five feet, they're gonna jump in a small hole, massive jailbreak.
So I just wanna point out again, if you look at the last page in the application that shows the lower levels, all of the animal areas are with 70, within 75 feet of the exit area, stairwell. So anything beyond that is really offices and storage. And that's kind of intentional to make sure that all the animals and most of the people would be are closest to the egress points.
I guess if you're comfortable with it, it meets the law, everybody's alright with that, that's, that's okay. The only thing I saw there when I walked around the building is like, there should be some way to get out of here. Anything that size or nearly has an exit coming out.
Well, and as Amy noted, it is sprinkler, so that's up to code as well. So there's sort of two measures there.
Anybody got any questions?
No, I think it's a cool mess.
You need several variances, I guess, in the origin, for setbacks. The fence is gonna need, what else is gonna need variances there? Fencing, use?
No, not use.
They got that from Town Board?
Well, yes, they're, they're seeing a special use for that by the Town Board, but the variances would be for lot area, and then side setback, setback's really the fencing.
All right. Anybody? Chair, chair? You guys okay with that?
This is a sketch plan?
Yeah, just sketch plan, that's all it is. All right, I guess we'll go to the zoning board, get through that, and we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
The area on the agenda scheduled matters tonight is Oakmont Apartments' entrance sign located in One Oakmont Boulevard, applicant's Skyline Signs Incorporated is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of a 32 square foot freestanding entrance sign on a 41.69 acre parcel located in an MHR medium high density residential district under section 178-4 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Frank, 30 Skyline Signs, 60 Webster Park Circle, Rochester, New York, representing Morgan Properties. We were here last month discussing a new sign for the new ownership of the apartment complex. It was stated they were trying to, you guys, that they tried to reuse the synthetic stucco mining that's there now. We resubmitted a drawing, or they resubmitted drawings showing a new stone base. You should have some revised drawings. I didn't know if the, we also, there was a narrative that was sent from the owner, was that with your packet?
I'm sorry?
It's like a narrative just describing the, the revisions and that. I can read some if you wish. There's Oakmont Apartments revised signage narratives.
Yeah, why didn't you read it to just get it right?
Okay, so this was written with, between Morgan and an actual manufacturer, Hudson David, it makes the stuff.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
I've got one right here, just one.
Oh, okay, can I have a copy?
Yes, oh, sure. This is what they wrote. Says, "Brief description of the applicant. The applicant, Morgan Properties, was founded in 1985 and owns and manages multiple family residential properties across 10 states. Morgan Properties acquired Morgan Communities of Rochester in 2019. In transition, it was volatile, 80 properties in New York State with over 50 of them in the great Rochester area. As a result of, from the New York State acquisitions, the significant investment is being made to refresh these properties, including the signage, so that there's no other indication of the former Morgan Communities." The applicant, this is the signed description, revised applicant request. The applicant understands that the previous reviewing concerns were expressed above the design of the post-post and panels by the sign. That design matches other replacement signs that we've already, already done in the Western communities at two other locations. The applicant understands that the board is looking for Morgan architectural with masonry base, which is similar to other signs in the areas. The applicant has resubmitted revised design and stacked stone masonry base, and appreciates the board's consideration of this revision. Similar signs were done exactly the same way in the Regency and Victor Village Apartments in Victor, New York. They also wanted to see a masonry base, and got rid of the post design. Masonry is described in mining sign, this design is a prototype that they've used in other locations. Although the applicant does understand the board's preference that the existing monument try to be reused and simply refaced, the applicant respectfully submits that it is not a viable option due to the condition of the existing monument structure, and appreciates the board's understanding of this matter. The existing monument structure is what is termed as fake masonry, which is a styrofoam and plaster based structure. Existing is already showing telltale markers of deterioration, cracks, existing skin is pulling away from some part of the, the substructures, and cracks are developing, and will only get worse. Once water gets into these so-called old monuments that are basing it, there's really no stopping it from starting to deteriorate even more.
I'm gonna interrupt you a second. I went over there yesterday, and took pictures of that.
Yeah.
And I still don't know what you're saying.
It's really simple.
You know, a couple minor little defects here and there could be easily fixed.
I stopped on my way tonight to the meeting, and I saw the same thing.
I didn't see any damage to it, I took photos of it. Matter of fact, while I was there, three of the residents were wondering what I was doing, standing there taking pictures of the sign. And I told them, you know, there was an application for a sign change, and it was this year, that they were not happy campers, they liked their sign. I highly recommend, they keep what's there and fix it, it's a beautiful sign. Yeah, it's doing, it's not attracting them off. What's that? Just doing it, just doesn't bother them. No, it's, it still looks good. The only thing, the whole thing was the fake brick around the sign, I love it, it's not a trick at all.
And the other thing is, there's, there's no indication of Morgan Communities on this sign, so it's not like there's something that...
Well, I think it's, I think it's the coloration that they're using in the type I that these are using over there. They said, we were in front of the board here last year, there were two other Western locations, they're on, they're on posts, those other two.
What are these other Western locations?
Behind White Men's. Yeah, behind White Men's, there's one, one's Webster, huh? Webster Manor. Webster Green, Webster Manor. And those are the ones, they just go on two singular posts that are screwed posts.
Absolutely, and there was no, there was no problem with it from this board. They, one of your comments was, you know, this is their new style of sign, and we're talking about that, but then earlier you had said that they have had issues where they have changed in the past.
Well, well, some of the towns don't like the post one.
Well, that's...
So they came, they have a style, the drawing you see right there?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's an identical one to two of them they did in Victor. Victor told them, we don't like the, just a double post, give us something with any masonry involved, and he said, yes, this is our masonry style one, and it's with, you know, real stone, it's not simulated.
This is, this is, I think so, is what they're showing.
Oh, I mean, it's stone, it's not, not a...
If water hits the back of that, that'll peel right off too, so that's not the greatest problem.
The difference may be here of what was there and what's being replaced, and I don't believe the apartments behind White Men's or Webster Manor have, you know, as nice of a sign as this one, so.
How do you call those locations?
I, I would guess Webster Manor probably had a post sign and was just replacing the post sign, I, I don't know, I don't remember. But you were going from either nothing to a new sign location, or you're, which is one thing, which, the sign that you've proposed, if, if that came to this board, it, it, it would probably be okay. The difference is, is you're, you're downgrading the, you're significantly downgrading the sign that's already there, and I think that's...
I can't speak on that because I don't, you know, I'm not the owner, I'm not the representative.
And, and I understand, but I, I believe, like, is that, or is there what other people say, it's just it's significantly downgrading what's there.
Yeah, and no question there, that's, there was, when, when Oakmont was built, when they came in with that project, one of the things was the sign, there's a lot of traffic along Jackson Street, and actually on the interior, where the room splits, there's the same type of sign as inside. I'm gonna assume they're leaving that one?
They're replacing both of them.
That doesn't make sense to me, you know, absolutely beautiful signs.
We're trying to get away from the fake stucco units because they did run through them.
Well, I...
Maybe not as much, maybe not as much, I've been in the business 40 years, and when those things came out, it looked very pretty for a while, and we've already, our own customers, we've already replaced a few of them. We brought masons in, from regular brick and, and land made stone on it instead of styrofoam.
I, I, you know, something boring, in my, my opinion, I saw, I went over and looked at it, I could not see the damage.
I know they submitted photographs, and I made this sound, making sure of a variety of parts where they're starting to deteriorate. I mean, what's the customers', what would the customers recourse, being that, you know, they get denied and they don't, and they only allow to, can they just tear that monument down and start again? That's what they wanna do. They wanna replace it completely, give it a new sign. So they're looking, they're looking for direction from the town of Webster.
See, we already, we did this the last meeting, we went through this, we...
Well, well, the last meeting, the last meeting was, the last meeting was to keep the stucco and just put some new panels on it. Well, they don't wanna do that.
Well, that's, and the McDonald's wanna take down their big golden arch.
What would, what, what would the board allow? Let's, let's forget that the sign's even there. If I was coming before fresh, let's say that tomorrow they decide the developer's gonna redo that entrance and tear that sign down, and here's a fresh application for a sign. Would that sign that you're looking at right now be approved by this board?
The one that's existing?
No, no.
The one that they gave them, probably not.
Let's say, let's say a truck ran over.
Yeah, probably not, we would be looking for something more ornamental on it, you know, more attractive.
So what do I tell the people in Philadelphia?
That they got an...
Now, what, what do you want now?
That the town of Webster spent a lot of time reviewing Oakmont when it was originally built.
I expressed that.
Looked at this sign, approved it, was very happy with it, the standing is the same, the neighbors are very happy with their sign. I, well, I only spoke to three of them that happened to be going by, like I said, but they're very happy with their sign, and they don't wanna see just a simple plain sign. And I think that's what we should understand.
So I, I need, I need some kind of guidance to give, some design concept.
Show them a picture of what exists and say, make this again.
It's their approval we needed the last time.
Yeah, that's the way we do it.
They're, and, and, they're, they're gonna take it down, I mean, there's no doubt about it, they wanna remove them.
Well, I'm sure they do.
That's what the contract, the contract has already informed us that they're, they're taking them down.
Well, let them take them down.
But I mean, what, what should they do?
Okay, I'll tell you what, here's the deal, you already got a contract? No, no. Tell them, go ahead and take the signs down, and then just come in with a new plan showing what they wanna build, this won't be the...
But what do we tell?
Then we'll play hardball, that's all.
No, no, we're not playing hardball. What do I tell the design company that's doing it? What does it look like? Should it just be identical to what's there?
No, you're going down a height, you know, we, we've already made a decision.
It's what's there.
It's what's there, and just replace it.
So I'm just telling them that the, the stuff before, what do you got?
Yeah, just, just change their plaque.
We made a decision from the board.
Just change their plaque, and you do have the address on the end, on the, on the face, but that's cool, that's nice, that's good. But the sign, that's, that's, that's why we did this the last meeting?
I'm just, I'm just gonna do that.
No, I know, I'm just...
We've done, like I said, we've, we've done probably 35 of these already.
Yeah.
And every town has been, some of them have just been simple, you understand? You know, one for one, no problem. The only ones that made a town was so far with Victor, was Victor, because they like mason, they like masonry bases.
I understand something.
Versus posts. They like, they like a masonry base versus post signs.
Yeah, that's opposite.
You know, because we went in there and it was not too close, they said, no, you know, the sign is, there is on a brick base.
Yeah.
Put the new, design the new sign if you have a brick base, you like brick, or, or masonry. So that's what, that's the, the, the concept we use today.
Well, I think that, then the guidance should be, if they wanna do a whole new structure, then the structure should be commensurate or nicer than what is already there. We're trying not to go backwards, we want a similar structure with the stone or masonry to what's there.
So you're saying, it comforts the whole sign of masonry, like, like the fake, fake stucco.
The decision we made last time was re-approved.
Yeah.
So they've already got approval, but just put new placards on existing masonry.
Yes.
So that's it, sounds like the board is just sticking with that decision.
Yes.
What, what they have there is a very attractive sign.
Yeah.
It's landscape nice, it's a, it's a, it's an extremely beautiful entrance to a... It's landscape nice, it's a, it's a, it's an extremely beautiful interest to a project. So, let's see if we can get them to leave it that way and just change their, you know, their lettering and so on inside the sign itself. And they can, they can just post the address right on the face there, and this, it's not a big deal. A guy, a whole lot less expensive, too. I don't understand why they don't, and the neighbors there, again, the three that came out of there, they were like, they don't want to see anything changed, we like our sign. Okay, that's serious, that's their words. We don't want to do it, what?
Well, you've already approved the other, the other decision.
Yeah, we've got...
I'll just go back and say, hey, what they've approved, they don't care if the thing's falling apart or whatever, you got to keep it the way it is.
Yeah, but it's not falling.
They can't picture it and do whatever.
They told you that, they're full of longing.
Well, they sent me pictures, I got, I sent them into the building part. There's a bunch of, you know, around the base, it's all cracked and started, it's going right down to the styrofoam, which is exposing the inner core of the material, which is all it is, the styrofoam inside it. It's, it's, once water...
They'd like to put up a new one, they can build a new one in the same way that the old one looks, but just use the regular material.
Yeah, use, use brick, yeah, use block and brick.
That's what I, that's what I just said, just make it look like that, with the same foundation frame, it's just, you want something that is equivalent to what's there or better, not, we don't want it to go backwards.
Well, what they're proposing is, is a lot better than, is a lot better than what's existing. I mean, materialized, that, that stecco monument might have been $4,500, they're done with $11,000 into the sign. It's a very expensive sign.
I, and I just respectfully disagree that the one that's proposed is nicer than what's there.
But I'm saying dollars wise, I'm... All right, anyways, we made a decision at the last time, unless you want, you guys want to vote to change it to this, then there's no sense in continuing the discussion.
Okay.
All right. So, we've got to make a decision, are we going to table it? So, you hear from them again, or else we just vote?
I can just go back to them and say, hey, they're, they're not budging, you have to stick with what you got.
All right. Then, and then they take it from there, if they, if they decide they're going to go the next step up. So, we either, we either have to approve, disapprove, or table it, yeah? Want to table it? What would you, if we deny...
Well, you've already given an approval from the last meeting.
Yeah, but you're here with another beginning, oh, they can't get another...
It doesn't sound like that's going to be approved. So, we'd actually just be withdrawing.
That's what I'm saying. All right, so, do you want to make a motion on this? I'll make a motion, we deny the application as presented.
I'll second that.
And the Apricent stick with the original.
Okay, Mr. Kashani?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Maltin?
Aye.
Okay, I, I think they...
Well, I got another information to get back to them, but then, like I said, they, they say, you know, I say, it's not my decision to say, hey...
They'll live through it.
No.
They'll live through. All right? Okay, that's all I have. Okay, that's it. Any else up, is everything there?
We approved the minutes for the last meeting.
Yeah, we can do it right there.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, except for the October 4 meeting.
Sorry?
Okay, did you...
Oliver?
Aye.
You want to vote for them?
All right, that's it, I guess, so, we're done for this evening, thanks for coming in.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]